Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good morning, are there any public comments, Mr. Shelton, that you have listed, just generic public comments, do you have anybody listed?
Yes, sir.
Anybody in the room want to speak before we move on? Fantastic, staff, legislation legal matters and miscellaneous staff items. And I think it's worth mentioning, Madam Director, before we get started, we have our sixth member of the commission is joining us virtually. So it doesn't, it's not a man show today. We're represented online virtually and certainly by the rest of you, go ahead.
Good morning, Amy Mordock, Planning Director, I'm going to, with your permission, flip the order of our staff updates and legal matters and defer to our colleagues from DPW and Parks and Rec. You had a couple of months ago asked for an update on the trails and I'd mentioned that I would reach out to our friends in Parks and Rec and DPW and ask for this update, so it's on our agenda this morning, once they're through with their update to you, I'll give you some planning and zoning updates.
Fantastic, team Steve, Steve C. no less, thank you gentlemen.
Good morning, my name is Steve Chanley, I'm the Director for Parks and Recreation and I'm sure you guys-
Steve Cahoon with Queen Anne's County Public Works, the Public Facilities Planner, good morning.
So everyone, first of all, thank you guys for giving us a few minutes just to give you an update on where we are with trails in the county. With the trail projects, you know, our main concern is what we're trying to do is combine and connect the Cross Island Trail and the South Island Trail. Right now, we've got, you know, a nice big gap between there, for the past couple of years, we've been working to go ahead and construct the trails. So we've been working on the extension of the South Island Trail, we're also talking about the Cross County Connector Trail, we've got a feasibility study for that. There's also been a public meeting about the US fifty-three oh one overpass study too, that would be the true connection for the two trails. And then also, we've got a slide about trail improvements and maintenance. As you can see up on the map, we've got several different phases, we've got about six phases that are going on. If you look at Phase One, which is red, that's near Waterman Joe's, that's kind of an easy landmark there. That is constructed, and Phase Two, which is the other red trail line map, which is that Mata Peak School complex, both of those are completed and construction. Right now, we're working on Phase Three, which is the blue, which runs behind Mowbray Park, if you want to go ahead and switch over Steve. So again, Phase One and Two are constructed, Phase Three is currently being constructed right now. Phase Four, which is across the street, which goes from Mata Peak to Christ Church, that's in design and engineering right now, we're hoping to get that under construction relatively soon. Phase Five is to be constructed with the Thompson Creek Connector Road, and Phase Six is the pedestrian overpass. Just to give you some idea, this is a bid that we put out for Phase Three, our bids were received on August eighth. The cost, you can see there, is about five hundred ninety-three thousand, we've got one contractor that's doing everything from clearing to putting down the trail base and also paving, this is a little bit different than how we've operated in the past and it seems to be working out quite well right now. Construction right now is only able to be performed between September of this year up through March twenty-sixth, or March of twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry. Then we have to wait again until September because we ran into some areas which have forest interior dwelling species. So there's kind of like a freeze where we can't do any type of construction. So we're hoping that it'll be a nice winter, we can get a lot of it done and, you know, with any luck, you know, if it's a good winter, we could be done by March. But we're anticipating that we're going to have to have that little break and then come back in September and then go ahead and pave that. Go ahead, this is a, oh, go back, this picture right here is Phase Three, this gives you an actual shot of of the trail that's been cleared through so far, it's actually Blunt Marsh Road, if you look to the left and to the right, those are the views that you see. So it's going to be a very picturesque trail, it's going to be really nice and we're looking forward to that. We're anticipating that the tree removal should be done this week and then they should be moving into the next phase of putting down the base of the trail. As I mentioned before about Phase Four, this is the part where we actually cross from Mata Peak Elementary School over to Christ Church and then we run it all the way down to Mata Peak where our trailhead is. So again, that's in design right now and we're hoping again to get a bid out relatively soon. And again, just as I said, design and engineering, the bid to go out late spring, and again, we're going to go with the the current situation we did with one contractor to do it all, it's a lot, I'm thinking it's a lot easier to hold one person accountable as opposed to working with three different contractors and getting on their schedule, so if you got one primary responsible person, I think is going to move really well for us.
Okay, so we have that South Island Trail under construction, under engineering, but now we're switching to planning, transportation planning. And last year, the county commissioners, with the help of Parks, the Parks Department and the Bike and Pet Advisory Committee, adopted a Bike and Pet Master Plan, and as a result of the Bike and Pet Master Plan, we have two feasibility studies currently in process now. The first feasibility study we're going to talk about is the Cross County Connector Trail feasibility study. You remember about five, six years ago, we had a trail that ran from the Kentonara's all the way to Graysonville and ended up at the Royal Farms there and Jackson Creek and Long Point Park. And so this feasibility is start, study is looking at extending that trail all the way to the town of Queenstown. So we were fortunate to be able to get a grant to hire a consultant to do a feasibility study and that feasibility study is looking at extending the trail, starting at the Royal Farms, following pretty much the road network to the golf course property, the Queenstown Links Golf Course Property. And then we're working with them to get through their property, actually to the town of Queenstown. So the feasibility study will lay out a preferred alternative on where we would put the trail and also what issues we'll need to be aware of moving into engineering and design. Another key part of the feasibility study is trying to get across the overpasses, there's two existing overpasses in Graysonville. And trying to see if we, there's room to get across those overpasses to link everybody in Graysonville to our trail system. It would be great to have those thousands of residents there on Main Street in Graysonville and the connecting communities to be able to safely cross those overpasses to use the trail system, so that's part of the feasibility study as well. Next slide, we received a grant of eighty thousand dollars from the Baltimore Regional Transportation Board to do the study. It's a direct result of adopting the Bike and Pet Master Plan. You know, it's from Long Point Park, we were looking to go to Nesbit Road, but we decided, because of a conversation with the golf course, to actually extend it to the town of Queenstown and they are interested in working with the county on that. So, and it includes the overpasses as I mentioned, next slide. The other feasibility study, the second feasibility study that's underway right now is the pedestrian crossing of US fifty-three oh one. For about thirty years, the county has had and adopted goal of connecting the Cross Island Trail and the South Island Trail. That's been in multiple comprehensive plans recommended by the Planning Commission and we're trying to implement that. The feasibility study is the first step to do that and we hired a firm, RK&amp;K, to look at four potential alternative crossing locations. Of the four, two have been eliminated as not really being feasible and two are moving forward for further analysis. And those options are Option One, which is shown there in the purple, and Option Four, which is shown there in red. And a huge part of a feasibility study and a planning process like this is getting the public comment and public outreach on what the community wants or what their concerns are, and we held a meeting on October twenty-third to do that, next slide.
Which two options are you looking at there?
So if you want to go to the next slide, Option One, so goes from where, currently, there's a segment of trail at Bay Bridge Cove and where each of these options is connecting to that existing segment of trail. Option One is looking at continuing up Route Eight, heading down Pier One Road and crossing US fifty-three oh one into Terrapin Park. Option Four is a little farther east, going, following where the Thompson Creek Connector Road is to be constructed, crossing the headwaters of Thompson Creek to the Cracker Barrel Site, crossing over to the middle school property and to ultimately to the library. If you could go back one slide, the two options that did not move forward, one was using the existing Maryland eight overpass. We felt there were safety concerns and that was not feasible. The only way it would be feasible is if through the bay crossing study, the overpass was reconstructed and we have no idea of a timeline or even if that's going to happen, so that option was eliminated due to safety concerns and unknowns. The yellow option, Option Three, was crossing from the Target Shopping Center, Kent Landing, over to a piece of property, a park property owned that was donated to the county by the Isenger family. That option was looked at, there are some utility issues with high power lines there that make the crossing difficult. And then also with that connection, it really doesn't get you to the Cross Island Trail. So it's kind of, it gets you across fifty, but then the next connection, it was very difficult to make the next connection. So those were the two options eliminated. So a little bit of information on each option, they connect to different locations, one to a park, one to the library. There are different distances and lengths, so where we are in the feasibility study is we're taking a little bit more detailed look at both of them. The options will be presented to the county commissioners for their input and with the public comment that we received during the public meeting.
So, my purview here, but what do you anticipate those crossovers costing?
Significant amount.
Who pays for that?
What's that?
Who pays for it?
It would be a county commissioner decision, it would, this would be a county project, yes. So, so this is a county project and part of the feasibility study is getting that cost. You know, with these two different options, we're talking two different costs, but that's a big part of this feasibility study. It'll provide a, kind of a higher level cost estimate, but it will drill down based on the design.
I'm sorry, I jumped, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
But it is a county project, it would have to go in the capital budget, move forward through the capital budgeting process and the commissioners would have to allocate the funds. And as I have to say, they have me aggressively pursuing grant funds anywhere, anyplace to see how we can help with the funding of moving that forward, so.
Moving forward, this is a slide of a Cross County Connector Trail improvement. Again, over the course of time, the asphalt sunk a little bit, so there was a lip and, you know, again, that made for a potential trip hazard or a dangerous ride experience where you can pop a tire. So again, we just added that asphalt ramp there just to continue to make sure everything's safe. We also have been having our staff walk the bridge because there have been some boards that have deteriorated over the course of time. So that's an, that's an ongoing process and we've, I think, to date, we've probably flipped out probably close to three hundred boards. And again, we've run into some concerns and I think it's, I think it's the process of how boards are now preserved. They're not preserved the way they were in the past, where before in the past, the boards were dipped and the materials were soaked up in there. Nowadays, they spray it or they mist it, so you really don't get that absorption to protect the bridge, the bridges and the boards. So again, that's something new that our staff is taking care of, whether it be the Rangers or whether it be your general park maintenance staff that is taking care of it. So we'll continually walk it and, you know, we'll try to minimize the amount of closures or try to do it when it's in a non-busy time. But, you know, we're out there, you know, maintaining those and keeping those safe, next slide please. The other thing that we have been taking care of is invasive weed management, as you can see, we've cut this swath. We had a contractor cut the swath to keep the weeds back off of it again, just to, you know, have a nice clear walk that goes through and as you can see along the fencing, you can see where some of the vines, you know, they grow up quick through there and there's, you know, one invasive species called mile a minute and it truly is a mile a minute, you cut it and the next day, it's another, you know, three feet high up there. So we've been working to keep those invasive weeds, you know, at bay and again, keeping the whole trail experience nice. And it's not only done, at this one, we went through and we did the Cross Island Trail and cut back a lot of, you know, dead and dying limbs as well as invasive vines that were through there and then just kind of really opened it up and really made for a better experience. And, you know, the hard part is, just like anything, you know, it's the pain and suffering of having to close the trail for a little bit because people want to walk by you while you're doing the work, but in the end, you know, that one day or two day closure is well worth it because again, it gives you a better experience as you're, you know, traversing the trail. And that's it, if you guys have any questions for us?
Thank you very much for bringing that, I think it's, as you point out, obviously, you're worried about a one or two day closing and that's certainly, I think, sensitive in my perspective, but I think, you know, the public doesn't always understand that. You know, the one day that they may have gotten out or want to go stretch their legs on a nice spring day and you're out there with trails and hammers and this heavy machinery with the trail closed, so thank you for explaining that to us and to the public. And clearly, we're happy to work with you on working to get these connections made, right? We talk often here about the sidewalks to nowhere that developers don't want to build, but sooner or later, in the aggregate, we get them all connected slowly and patiently. So we appreciate your persistence in working with staff here and planning zoning to connect these disconnects and fill in those gaps because I think at the end of the day, the end of the year, the end of the process, it's a real gem for the county, I think, and for the residents that that not only front this, you know, with the residences, but use it to get back and forth to school or parks or to exercise.
And on that same note again, and that's, you know, where the bridge crossing comes into play, you know. Do you want, you know, one is all about experience, Option One, you know, because it takes you down by the water. Option Four, which, you know, brings you directly to the schools and by the stores and stuff like that, that's about connectivity. So it's really a kind of a matter of, you know, what is the end goal, you know, what do the commissioners want? What do, you know, you guys also prefer as well as, you know, having our put, our input as well as the citizen input as well? And so, you know, the good thing is, there's two opposite views, so, you know, you can really, you know, come up with a right, there's no wrong answer in this situation, so that's, that's the good thing. But again, just keeping in mind, what do you want to do, do you want to have the experience or do you want to have the connectivity that goes with it?
Trade-offs for every, for both of them.
Do you have any feel for traffic, in other words, how many people are using it, any statistics on that?
We did at one time, we had some counters that we placed on the trails and then through some software issues, it's kind, it has stopped. I have to go through like several different hoops to be able to recapture that, but we do have the ability to get some numbers. But the Cross Island Trail, I mean, is highly, highly used, it's one of the most popular amenities in the parks. And I know at one time, there was a heat map study that went along and showed how busy that the Cross Island Trail was. And I mean, it was, it was red the entire, the entire time and you can see it, you know, from as early as, you know, six in the morning to, you know, dusk at night, so, you know, you get everybody on there. And we also have a lot of events that take place on there, we co-sponsor a lot of walks that take place or races that take place. So again, you know, we got a lot of people out there, we have bike clubs that have come from Virginia, as far as Virginia, to come and ride our trails. You know, the great thing about our trails is it's, they're long and they're flat, you know, so you can't, you can't go wrong with that.
Do they pay to use it?
Some do and the reason I say some do is if we don't charge them, we are put on as a co-sponsor. So we can say that we're also sponsoring that event as well because I think it's important to get, you know, the county Parks and Recreation Department out there, their name out there. So people know exactly, you know, who's responsible for this, good, bad or indifferent, they need to know who is, you know, who's the owner of that and that seems to work out and, you know, it's a good, you know, it's a good PR tool for us.
So you're doing Phase Three, I think you said, on the interconnection building in, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar contract?
Correct.
How long is that?
That is, Phase Three is about thirty-eight hundred feet. If you look on this map here, the color-coded map, each phase has the length.
Seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a mile, roughly?
That's cheap, to be honest with you.
Whose world is that cheap?
In the trail building world.
Well, how many more miles is there to build? And you're doing this on a no bid contract? My purview, I get it, but I'm a citizen, right, I can still ask.
Well, State Highway puts out a a program which you can punch in all the, all the data as far as the length and the width and so forth and it calculates what the cost of a trail is and it shows and it's not always right, but it kind of gives you a ballpark and it shows, you know, the current cost of a mile of trail is about a million dollars. But you also got to remember when you, you know, you paved that trail, you know, for the most part, that paving is going to last probably twenty, thirty years, if it's, you know, if it's all asphalt and you don't have any bridges and things like that. So, you know, when you amortize that over the course of time, it, you know, it does bring it down, but you also have to look at the amount of people that come in, you know, are they going to spend extra money, you know, at restaurants and gas and things like that? So, you know, there, there's a benefit, not only financially, but there's also a benefit as far as what people like in their county, you know, where they live and where they want to come to, so, you know, there's, you know, like anything, there's a cost benefit to it.
What's your long-term view of where these trails are going?
Well, first and foremost is to be able to get the connection between-
It's an intermediate or short-term view, I'm talking long-term.
Long-term, I think the idea- Long-term? I think the idea is also to be able to, to spread our trails throughout the county. Everything shouldn't be...
Through farmland too.
What's that?
Through farmland too.
If that opportunity prevails itself. And, you know, again, that's part of the difficulty that Queen Anne's County has because the roadway's here, the ditch is there, the farmland's there. There's not a lot of play in some of those areas. Some of the trails are going to have to be probably on-road. But again, it's, you know, the trails can be different for each person. You can have a trail like the Cross Island Trail or the South Island Trail that can have everybody on there. But then you can have another trail that's an on-road trail, which is more for the bikers that, you know, want to go that long distance and, you know, are speeding down. So you have a little bit of everything.
Where your future plans include the use of railroad right-of-way easements that go directly through the middle of many farms in this county?
Right, I've seen it.
That have been abandoned for decades. I'm talking decades. They weren't, they've been using since I was a little boy. That's a long time. Right? And you're going to, you're going to go through the middle of farms?
Let's take a step back. What we've done is we created the Bike and Ped Master Plan, and we went out to the public and asked them as a community, as a county, where do you want your trails? And then what we found out is they wanted trails everywhere, honestly. And a lot of it crosses farmland in the more rural areas. But what happened...
Love it what?
Crosses through the rural areas of the county, which goes in front of farmland, mostly along state highways in those areas. But with that, we can't do all that. You know, all the trails that were listed out in the Bike and Ped Master Plan, we're never going to get to all of them. So we had to prioritize what we can do. So the top priorities were making connections between the existing trail system so we can create one larger trail system. The second priority was extending from our existing trails. And one of the main things we heard from the public is they wanted to get our towns connected. So our top-tier priorities are these feasibility studies and trying to get the trail from where it is today to the town of Queenstown and to the town of Centerville. So if you look at the Bike and Ped Master Plan, those are the top-tier priorities. For the most part, with each one of those trails, we'll have to do a feasibility study, see where it will fit, where it can go. It'll be a public process. And then that would turn into a public budget process and capital process with the county commissioners. So, and one of the things we're doing during the feasibility study is seeing where we can fit in the existing right-of-way with state highway and where we would have to go talk to a property owner about whether it's possible to use a portion of their road frontage or if they're interested in us coming through the property. So we are very conscious about...
When do you perceive surveying those folks, those property owners?
What's that?
When do you perceive yourself going to those property owners and asking them their opinions about whether they want a trail through their property? I'm not trying to be argumentative. I can tell you right now, Talbot County is working on a trail appears from Easton, at least to Cordova.
Yes.
And nobody's, nobody's from, you talk to the local landlords, they haven't approached a single landowner whether they think it's a good idea for a trail to come through their property. Not one.
We're with, during the feasibility study, that's when we're dealing with those issues.
I would suggest at least talk to the Farm Bureau. Not that they're going to do much, but you ought to talk to them.
Sure, sure. We haven't hit a farm between, well, our priorities and what we're working on now, the feasibility study is the area where we identify those issues then and try to get a budget. I mean, that's, there are steps in the process and people are involved in the public process in all those steps. That's all, you know. It's not, we're not out there doing this, you know, this has all been very public and out there for anybody to participate in the process.
Starting with the comprehensive plan and getting all that feedback. You good, Bill?
No, but you can go on.
Well, let's, we can stay here for a while, so.
I think your concerns are very much more property-specific than what this discussion is. And I'm happy to meet with you and talk with you about them and happy to go talk...
I would say property rights-specific. I would argue with your terminology there a little bit. I think that, you know, the Constitution grants citizens rights that are property. Yes, they need to be compensated. I don't know if you're compensating fairly.
You aren't infringing on any of them.
I look at this thing with these railroads, it irks me to no end, that those railroads weren't reverted to the original property owners. And I think we were given the short end of the stick on that deal.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you very much to both of the Steves. I told them it was going to be a 10-minute presentation. So thanks to both of them for fielding all of your questions. Some of the conversation really did go beyond the scope of what we asked them to present. And I don't want anyone to think that there are more substantive pieces of the planning process in place than there actually are. So some of this conversation was very broad and what they're working on right now is very focused. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I will be very quick to get us back on track. I just have a few notes and they are more of staffing-level updates and county business. So I just want to let you know that our department is fully staffed. Hope Trentley is the most recent member of our staff. She came on board at the end of September. And I think I may have mentioned at a previous meeting that Sarah Rondo came on board in July. And that brings us to a full staffing level. And so we have a really good team and we're all working hard. And as, as you know, we have been transitioning into the electronic era. And our materials, our letters, our staff reports, our presentations are all being made available online in ways that they haven't always been. So in light of that, and as just good professional practice, our staff is going to undergo a training session on Tuesday, the 18th of November. I just want to announce that publicly so that you're aware and the public is aware that we have two training sessions off-site. And our department will be operating at half-staff in waves, a morning session and an afternoon session. So we'll be, you know, putting up signage to let people know. But it's very valuable training, professional training for our staff. And the office will be open, but at a reduced staff. So I wanted to let you know that. Another initiative that the county commissioners are taking on, it's kind of a second town hall meeting. They, the commissioners held a town hall to discuss the pedestrian overpass. They're also, we've been working together to put forward a town hall that explains the development review process in the county. So our staff, DPW staff, the QACTV staff, have all been working hard to put a town hall together, public service announcements, which have been a lot of fun and I think will be informative for the public. But that town hall meeting will be held at the Kent Island Library on Thursday, the 20th of November. You'll start to see some press about that town hall meeting. Feel free to attend. And the commissioners are basically hosting the town hall, but staff will be present to answer questions that the public might have about our process. It is development review-specific and not a general town hall meeting about county business. It's specific to development review because as everything is available online, there are questions about the process and about who plays what role in our process. And I think the only other update I want to give you is we're in the middle of conference season. So I've attended and presented at the Maryland Association of Stormwater and Flood Plane Managers Meeting last week. And staff will be, Vivian and I will be attending Winter Mako, representing our department. I'm the planner, the Mako Planner's affiliate president. So I will be directly involved in some of the panel discussions and some of the meetings that go on at Winter Mako. I don't really have a legislative update for you right now, other than to say that there are a lot of drafts floating around specific to housing initiatives that the governor and the Department of Housing and Community Development are promoting. And obviously, not, there's not a heavy lift on solar energy this year, but we are looking at fixing some of the previous legislation. Some of the implementation of Senate Bill 931 needs a little help. So we've all been engaged in reviewing some drafts that have been floating around and providing comments to Mako. I don't have anything substantive yet, but in the coming months, we will.
Much. Congratulations on being fully staffed.
Yes, thank you.
Well, coming.
All right. So first and foremost, starting with our projects. Major site plan SP 24110141, Eastern Shore Exodus LLC proposing an administrative subdivision. A major site plan develop a two-story mixed-use building. Proposed structure will be 3,800 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor, six one-bedroom commercial apartments on the second floor. Our applicant is requesting major site plan approval, DMS and Associates.
Welcome. Good morning, gentlemen. All right. Well, Mr. Lee, thank you so much for doing my first slide for me. I appreciate that very much. I'm Rob Gunter, Department of Planning and Zoning. And before I move in any further, if you'll note on here, the floor area, the square feet is 3,804. If you flip to your staff report on page three, I made an error. The second table down for floor area, I transpose the eight to zero. It says 3084, when it should be 3804. I blame Steve. He reviewed this and didn't catch it. All right. So the project is located on Kent Island, south of Route 50, in between Shamrock Road and Dundee Avenue. The existing site is approximately .344 acres. And as mentioned, there is an administrative subdivision component of this project. These two areas shown in white will be transferred from parcel 311 to parcel 93, making the boundary line of parcel 93 consistent with previously approved growth allocation. And you'll see that area in a couple slides. I'll point it out. The site is currently improved within existing single-family dwelling and associated outbuildings, and all existing improvements will be removed. Project is zoned town center. It's located within the Chester-Stevensville growth area as well as the enterprise zone and priority funding area. The proposal meets all applicable Chapter 18 landscape requirements. Stormwater is obviously being provided. It has been reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works. The site is not located within the 100-year floodplain, and there are no natural resources on site. It is entirely within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area with a designation of Intensely Developed Area or IDA. And because it's in the critical area, forest conservation is not applicable. If you look at the dark solid line here, that's the existing boundary line of parcel 93. On parcel 311 is this rectangle and this triangle. Those are what's being administratively subdivided into parcel 93. The intent was to do that. It just never got done when the growth allocation went through. So in 2014, the project was awarded its critical area growth allocation, changing it from limited development area to intensely developed. That approval included conditions from the county as well as the Critical Area Commission. And that award of a critical area growth allocation included parcels 90, 91, 92, and 93. In 2018, there was an amendment to the growth allocation concept plan that was approved by the Planning Commission. And that approval also included shared and reduced parking as well as reduced setbacks. Parcels 91, 2, and 3 have already been developed. Applicant has submitted a narrative addressing each condition of the growth allocation approval. And upon review of the growth allocation conditions, the current site plan, and the applicant's narrative, staff believes all the conditions will be met with the current proposal. So shown in black, here is the proposed two-story mixed-use building, again with commercial on the first floor, apartments on the second floor. And as everybody is probably aware by now, there is a moratorium in place for projects with residential components that require at least 1,750 gallons of sewer per day. This project only requires 753 and has an existing 250. Therefore, the moratorium will not affect this project, which is why you're seeing it currently. All town center district development standards are met with this project. They are proposing, again, 3,804 square feet of floor area, 10,786 square feet of impervious surface. There is an additional amount of impervious surface on parcels 91 and 92. It's minimal, but it's right here for access and parking improvements. They are still below their maximum amount permitted, and that information's in your staff report. Additionally, there are six one-bedroom commercial apartments proposed, and the code requires 50 square feet of balcony space and one additional canopy tree for each unit. And the proposal is providing those as well. Previously mentioned, there was a parking reduction for the overall development for these four parcels, taking the required amount of spaces down from 56 to 51. And this table shows you how they're distributed on the site. There are additional 45 spaces being provided on parcel 311 here. And the applicant has provided shared parking agreement for all the sites to share parking and access. So parcel 93 and 92 have no direct access to Main Street, which is located right here. To get into the site, you can enter and exit via Shamrock Road here or here, or on Dundee here and here. There is internal vehicular access provided throughout as well as pedestrian access. The project proposes a roadside sidewalk that will connect to the existing sidewalk on parcel 92 and the existing sidewalk across Shamrock Road. There are internal connections as well that will connect the two buildings as well as connect to the roadside sidewalk. This is obviously the architecture, number one and number three, or are the west and east side facades. Image number two here is what you will see from Main Street. And number four is the parking lot side or internal side of the structure. This design is similar to the previous developments in this growth allocation, which was a condition. And it meets all town center design standards. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them. Otherwise, I can turn it over to the applicant. Any questions from staff, from the commissioners? Thank you, Rob. Floor is yours, Mr. Showalter.
Good morning. For the record, Ryan Showalter, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Eastern Shore Exodus. To my right, Brandon Davis with DMS and Associates, and also Chad Helfenbein, the applicant. As is always, you're very fortunate to have the staff that you do. You've got a great staff report, very detailed and thorough. So I don't know that we have a lot, and we're not going to repeat anything that's already been covered. But I think Brandon has a couple of points we'd like to address. You have a submittal that we believe addresses all outstanding county comments and documents, compliance with all of the relevant design standards. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ryan. Again, Brandon Davis with DMS was highlighting the items that I had prepared to talk to you about, as Rob already said them. And I have a lot of items highlighted. So thank you for that extensive report. Just wanted to touch on a few, I think, key points of the project that hopefully Rob has not already mentioned. This is just the final phase of, I've been, I think I've even used the word campus, so to speak, of the parcels 311 and then parcels 90 through 93. You know, I've called the job the final phase in many ways. But, you know, completes the master plan, so to speak, or the concept plan that was associated with that growth allocation that was approved in 2014. I think one large safety benefit to the project is where the existing house does access Main Street with a gravel driveway, and we're taking that out. We're closing off the frontage along Main Street to mimic what has occurred in front of parcel 92 and also what has occurred with the apartment building on the, across Shamrock Road, I guess it's technically to the west. Shamrock Road, I guess it's technically, to the west. Fisher Architects has been, we've been working with them. They were also the architect behind parcels 90 and 91, so that helps with creating that consistency of architectural style between the properties, which was also, again, a growth allocation condition. One of the other growth allocation conditions that wouldn't be a normal requirement anyways was extra screening with landscaping. So we calculated that extra landscaping as a, providing a similar percentage of extra trees and shrubs to what parcel 90 and 91 did three or four years ago. So we've been providing that in addition to the regular landscaping requirements. The stormwater management that was shown on the site plan, we have permeable pavement out front for the 11 new parking spaces. That is to address the IDA pollutant reduction requirement, which is required for the IDA and also was specifically noted as a condition of growth allocation as well, which we've continued to address with, also addressed with parcels 90 and 91. The overall parking, now that we're including parcel 311 into the entire revised parking agreement, the parcels 90 through 93 and parcel 311 are combined require 95 overall spaces. And when you add up what's provided, we're exceeding that by one. So the overall proposed is now 96. I believe, anything else I had, I believe Rob already touched on in his report?
Any questions of the applicant? I've got one for Brandon and one for staff. I looked on the, one of your final sheets of the landscape plan, it suggests that you will be relocating four trees. That's something unique. Is that, you're transplanting them?
We're going to try to transplant them. They were planted within the last two years, probably?
Relatively small.
Yes.
Gotcha.
And they were planted for addressing the requirements of parcels 90 and 91. And they're just very tight to where Rob's covering.
Sure. I appreciate that. I think a lot of people overlook that opportunity. So, fair enough. Just wanted to get a better understanding of that. Second, Mr. Gunter, when this came, this topic came, maybe it was concept plan approval or something, I forget which designation it had several years ago. Residents of Dundee Avenue, I don't see anybody here from DPW, or Mr. Kahoon perhaps, I don't want to necessarily put him on the spot, but perhaps he could speak to it. The residents of Dundee Avenue had some traffic concerns, some also sort of some other community concerns that don't come to mind immediately in detail, but we had talked about this at the time that, and DPW was to look at the dig-on's philosophy of addressing the construction that was ongoing here at this campus. And the residents of Dundee extended to the, I guess, north of the picture here we're looking at. Do you have any reference to comment?
I do recall the comments. I do recall the discussion. We have not heard from anybody with regard to this project. And there are two folks here from DPW, Steve Kahoon and Eric. Eric, your last name escapes me, so I apologize. I don't know if they have any information on that further.
What I can share is after the last site plan supplemental, Shane Moore, roads engineer, did go out, look at the situation. I think it was more concerns about speeds and cutting through there. The roads are of a size and pavement that can handle the traffic. There's not a question about the roads handling the traffic. They are, you know, this is a segment located in a growth area between Maryland 18 and US 5301. It is a end on an exit ramp. It is an area where we expect to see that kind of traffic, so.
Understood. I just, I couldn't remember the details. So thank you so much, Mr. Kahoon, and I greatly appreciate that. I would also suspect that most of the traffic vehicular coming into this campus, I can't love that term, will be coming off of Main Street, probably, rather than off the highway, just sort of optimistically thinking. But thank you. Just wanted to make sure that comment was addressed during this process. Unless you have anything to add to that, Brandon?
I think the connectivity that we're creating from, you have the entrance from Shamrock Road into the parking lot of parcel 311, and now we're combining our proposed parking lot with that. I think that will.
Alleviate, because they can come out from two different sides, is what you're saying?
Right. And, and just my, from my perspective, driving down Route 18, the Shamrock Road intersection and just the width of that road is much more inviting for me to turn down that, and Dundee Avenue kind of is a hit. I mean, if I'm not going to one of Eastern Shore Exodus' buildings, or one of those dwellings that are there, it usually doesn't make sense to go down Dundee Avenue, because if I'm trying to get out to 301, I've done it at the.
Oh, it's much more of a local.
Yeah, I've done it at the Cantarros already.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. I'm proceeding on the assumption that small retail businesses are not going to generate a lot of vehicular traffic. Is that a good assumption?
The, the traffic, we, we were, received an exemption to adequacy of public facilities and the traffic input that was provided in that, you know, meeting the traffic standards was a very minimal trips generation, more so due to the apartments upstairs, but it was still quite minimal in, in the single-digit numbers with the threshold being 25.
Any anticipation of what types of businesses might find this attractive?
The current approach with the first-floor layout was potentially to relocate the flower shop that's currently next door into that, and that would have taken up the entire first floor with our current plan.
A flower shop. I love it. Any other questions?
It would be available for rent. So I mean, it could, the user could change.
Sure, sure. Of course.
Or, or, we coined it retail-commercial as our approach when our parking calculations and everything, floor area.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? All right.
Public comment?
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Is there a public comment on this application as it stands? Do we have anybody signed up, John? I'm sorry, he said no. Okay. That being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Resolved at the Planning Commission regarding the request by Eastern Shore Exodus LLC for major site plan approval for the redevelopment of Tax Map Number 57, parcel 93, to include 3,804 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor and six one-bedroom commercial apartments on the second floor. And as more particularly described in the Department of Planning and Zoning File, SP Number 24-11-0141, hereby finds that the site plan does meet all the requirements of Chapter 18, will not substantially increase traffic hazards or safety concerns due to traffic generated by the proposed use, the location or orientation of curb cuts, or the layout of internal circulation, does contain a layout of buildings, parking roads, parking roads, and utilities that does not substantially increase fire, health, or other public safety hazards, is adequately buffered and screened to minimize potential adverse impact to neighboring properties and rights of way, will not substantially increase stormwater, drainage, or pollution, will not have an unreasonably adverse effect upon property values in the vicinity of the site, and will not adversely affect the public welfare, and will provide for public safety through the compliance of the state fire code, and with any applicable county or municipal fire codes, is compatible with the general character of the surrounding neighborhood, and is consistent with the purpose, goals, and objectives of the 2022 comprehensive plan. Hereby grants major site plan approval subject to the following conditions. Any remaining edits or documents required by the reviewing agency, the Department of Public Works, or planning and zoning be reviewed and approved prior to final site plan signature. Any remaining edits or documents required by the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration must reviewed, must be reviewed and approved prior to final site plan signature. The architecture, lighting, and overall design must substantially reflect the documents provided. The administrative subdivision must be approved and recorded prior to the final site plan signature. Any required legal documents must be approved, signed, and recorded. Any required bonds, sureties, review, and inspection fees must be submitted to the Department of Public Works and the Department of Planning and Zoning as appropriate, and all required signatures must be obtained.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Deodis, do you have anything to say?
No, no questions for me.
All right, have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Congratulations.
Chairman, if I may, just because this project also includes conditions with the growth allocation, I think that if you find it appropriate, you could find that the application meets the conditions outlined by the commissioners for growth allocation as supported by the applicant's narrative.
Accept that as part of your motion?
Accepted as part of the motion.
Do we need a second there?
Yes, please.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we need to vote on that then as well?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have all in favor of council's offered amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Kathy, do you have?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Whoops.
That's good.
All right. Second item for discussions, minor site plan SP 25-05-0154, Waterman Realty. I won't steal your thunder, Steve.
Please do.
Yes, I got reprimanded the last time.
You can go through the whole thing.
You guys work hard to put these staff reports. You should, you know, be able to wave the flag. A little overzealous. It's been a while since I sat in the chair.
Morning.
Morning.
They are quite the partaking sometimes.
All right, Steve, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I'm Steve Johnson, Senior Planner with Planning and Zoning. As Mr. Lee stated, we're here to discuss project number SP 25-05-0154 for Waterman Realty Company Incorporated, who is proposing to construct a 2,144-square-foot commercial-use building and is requesting minor site plan. Again, yeah, this is a minor site plan. This is in front of you due to the fact that it's adjacent to Route 50. Project's located in Graysonville, north of Route 50 and west of Hissey Road. It's directly west of the Wawa there, and directly adjacent to the JPN storage facility, self-storage facility on 50. More specifically, Tax Map 58F parcel 12 totals .585 acres, and is located at 600 Winchester Creek Road in Graysonville. And as you can see by the aerial on your screen, it is currently vacant. Property is zoned urban commercial and is located in the Graysonville Growth area. It's also located within the Enterprise Zone and the Priority Funding Area. This property is completely located within the LDA designation of the Critical Area. All Critical Area requirements are met with this proposal, which includes mitigation for tree removal outside of an on-site woodland, which will be met by the planting of 14 trees. All Chapter 18 landscape requirements are met with this proposal. That includes on-site parking and street buffer landscaping. Stormwater management has been provided on-site. Those are the areas delineated in green on your screen. That has been reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works. There are no wetlands, steep slopes, streams, erosion hazards, or endangered species on-site, and it is not located within a 100-year floodplain. Again, there is a .21-acre woodland on-site. It's kind of to the northier screen there. No disturbance is proposed in that area, and forest is not, forest conservation is not applicable, again, because the property is entirely, entirely located within a critical All urban commercial district non-residential development standards are met with this proposal. It includes setbacks, height, floor area, and impervious. Again, the applicant is proposing 2,144 square feet of floor area and 5,424 feet of, square feet of impervious area. Eight parking spaces are provided on-site. That's one more than required. The property will be served by a private well and public sewer, and is exempt from APFO. A copy of that exemption was included in your packet. And finally, there is an easement provided along the road frontage for a future sidewalk, which is shown in dashed orange. The easement is provided on the site. I think there's a little bit of, they haven't quite determined which side of the road the sidewalk's going to be on, or the trail's going to be on in this area, so we figured the easement was the best way to go at this point.
Meaning nothing will be constructed at time of construction?
No.
Right.
No. I hear a look at the rendering. So this is the north-facing side of the building. This is the west-facing side. This is the east side of the building. And finally, this is the south view, which would be facing Route 50. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have, or turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions of staff from the commissioners? Kathy shaking her head. All right.
Morning, thank you. Nate Hoxer with Land Engineering, with Barry Waterman and Kevin Waterman, the applicants. Steve, thanks for the report.
Sure.
So, the only thing I kind of really want to mention is the sidewalk easement. That's for the, the county, the CCTV, I think is what it's called, County Connector Trail.
No V.
Oh, sorry. Just T. Anyway, so, yeah, that's undecided. Talking with Burl, it's more likely on the west side of Winchester Avenue, just because of, you know, the stretch down further Winchester Avenue where the boat dealer and all is. It's just there's no room for a trail to proceed that way, so it makes more sense on the west side, but it's pretty much the only thing that we're doing there is just providing the easement, and then the trail's most likely going to go in the public right-of-way anyway, so. And then the stormwater features are two, just microbyre retention, so that's the only thing I really have to say.
This has nothing to do with my request for approval, but it does speak to the process in Queen Anne's County. With a cooperative planning staff, a good engineer, it has still taken me two years and $60,000 to get here to ask for permission to apply for a building permit. There's, there's got to be some way that we can streamline this process and reduce the excessive costs, assuming we want to, and that's for a 2,000-square-foot building. It's not a big deal here. This is a difficult property, had a lot of issues, so, you know, fully expected that it would take longer and be expensive, but it just seems to be out of line if we want to encourage people to build commercial buildings in Queen Anne's County.
Appreciate your feedback, Mr. Waterman. You of many in the, a few in the county understand both sides of this, having sat on this commission and worked with staff, so appreciate that, and I'm sure Madam Director heard you, and she's taking notes. I have one question. It's, it's not necessarily impacting this development, but that empty lot, 635, Steve?
Yes.
Is, are we landlocking that? I mean, it's already landlocked whether Waterman's move ahead here. How is that property accessed? How do you access that property if I own that?
Frankly, I'm not.
I can probably answer that. Right now, they drive across my, my property. So there's no permission or anything to do that. That's, they just come in there because I, I let them. They have access off of 50. The only thing on that property is the billboard, and under county ordinance, if they want to do anything on that property, the billboard has to come down, and so that's why nothing's ever been done there, because the billboard makes more money than a building would. So they either are going to have to, if someone wants to develop, they'd have to seek a right-of-way across my property, or the neighboring property, or they'd sell it to one of the other, the adjacent properties, or they convince the state highway to give them access off of 50. So that's, that is all there is. We, we didn't do that. I mean, their access was from 50, and why they didn't do anything about access is because they just didn't need it.
Yeah, because you're not moving any lot lines for this proposed development, right?
Not at all.
Yeah.
There's a Jersey barrier wall on that side, too.
There is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just curious. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have one. So you made the comment about the cost, but you made no recommendations, and this probably isn't the time or place for that, even though I would have loved to hear at least one, because that is a lot of money. And that, to me, that's too much money if the, if the building is allowed to be there. You shouldn't have to spend that much money to get it done. Assume a fair amount of it was lawyers and engineers, but.
Well, I'm sure Nate would think that the price is very affordable, but most of it, most of it does go to engineering, and a lot of the problem is state regulations that have to be met and proven in the files. But I, I think the only way that we could possibly address that would be to put a work session group, group together of people in this business and staff, and see if we can figure out how we could streamline and reduce costs. I, I don't know what other options there would be.
Man, because you're talking to a farmer here, you know that. I don't, I don't understand it. I think that's appalling that it takes you that much money to get a building built.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. It's a lot. Damn near what the building costs.
You should at least get a free lot with it. Madam Director.
So I would like to address Mr. Waterman's comment. And he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I do want to go on the record to note that had this, this proposal been brought forward several years ago, you would have seen this project several years ago. It has taken several years and I can't address the expense involved, but it has taken several years to get to this point because working with Mr. Waterman, we explored means of addressing some of the state requirements because this property is a limited development area, even though that limited development designation is overlaid in our commercial zoning. At the time of mapping of the critical area program and even the mapping update, that parcel did not meet the state threshold to receive an intense development area designation. And seeking growth allocation wasn't a viable option because the property didn't meet the minimum growth allocation adjacency standards. So the delay really was a delay in exploring options that would have required changes to our program. So I, I just want to note that had this proposal been brought forward, as you see now, that does comply with the existing standards. And also, there was an update to the woodland provisions that made this project easier. That there wouldn't have been such an excessive delay. And that is often the case with, some of the last vacant parcels are more complicated with environmental features and other state constraints that soup, that must be layered on to our review in addition to the zoning code.
They're vacant, they're vacant still for a reason because of those constraints likely?
Yes. I, I'd just like to go on the record that I have never had the opportunity to correct Amy. And that Amy is, Amy and Stephanie were both extremely helpful in trying to make this project easier to do. The delay has nothing to do with staff. Has something to do with engineering and that the market will correct that over time. Engineering, there aren't as many engineering firms and people as there used to be, and it, and just getting that work turned out takes a long time. So the delay had nothing to do with staff. Much of that period was working with them, trying to come up with an easier route than we had to go for a better project. I mean, originally, we, I had hoped to be able to put a building of this size with four affordable apartments above it. Can't make it work because of the lot coverage requirements. So instead, we have just the commercial building and we don't get to contribute to more affordable housing. So anyway, those are all things the staff worked with me on trying to do. And just the whole process overall. Once we knew this was, this was what we were going to have to do, that process still took almost two years.
Are you looking at office space primarily in this or storage?
I think we're looking at more a small office and warehouse type business, you know, somebody who distributes something. We got a few people who are interested in the site, a pool guy, a coffee guy.
So it's not necessarily associated with your real estate business?
No, it has nothing to do with us.
Got it.
It's just, it just, it seemed like a good place to put a small commercial building with some apartments.
Right.
And so this is, this is the best we can do.
Understood. Thanks for laying that out.
And just to support Mr. Waterman's comments, if you do look at the project history dates on your staff report, that is clear because that came in, in May and it didn't come back for 25 days of middle until October, and we put it promptly on your agenda.
Any other questions of commissioners to staff or the applicant? Kathy shaking her head. All right, I will open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Kathy, go ahead.
I offer the motion here resolved that the planning commission regarding the request by Waterman Realty Company, Inc. for minor site plan approval for the construction of 2,144 square foot commercial use building and is more particularly described as Department of Planning and Zoning file SP 25-05-0154. Hereby finds the site plan does meet all requirements of Chapter 18, will not substantially increase traffic hazards or safety concerns due to traffic generated by the proposed use, the location orientation of curb cuts or the layout of internal circulation, does contain a layout of buildings, parking, roads, and utilities that does not substantially increase fire, health, or other public safety hazards, is adequately buffered and screened to minimize potential adverse impacts to neighboring properties and public rights of way, will not substantially increase stormwater damage or pollution, will not have an unreasonably adverse effect upon property value in the vicinity of the site, will not adversely affect the public welfare, and will provide the public safety through compliance with the state fire code and with any applicable county or municipal fire code, is compatible with the general character of the surrounding neighborhood, and is consistent with the purpose, goals, and objectives of the 2022 comprehensive plan. And hereby grants minor site plan approval subject to the following conditions. Any edits and/or documents required by the Department of Public Works, Planning and Zoning, or any other reviewing agency be reviewed and approved. Architecture and overall site design must substantially reflect the document provided. All required legal documents must be approved, signed, and recorded prior to obtaining final site plan signatures. And all required bonds, sureties, review, and inspection fees must be submitted to the Department of Public Works and the Department of Planning and Zoning as appropriate.
Second.
Chairman, if we could just pause on the motion for a moment and make sure there's no public comment?
Thank you. Pause made. Is there anyone, John, that's signed up for public? Anyone in the gallery wish to comment publicly? All right, thank you.
May proceed with your motion.
We have a motion. I had a second.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That was an in favor, Kathy. I'm assuming you made the motion? Yes, all right. Any, any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest a short break?
I was about to suggest the same thing. We will go into a five-minute break. Let's come back at 5:00 after 10:00, please. I will now open a public hearing regarding county ordinance 25-12 submitted by the Gunston School Incorporated. I'll ask Lindsey Ryan to verify that the proper procedure for advertising the public hearing into the record, please.
Yes, the notice for the November 13th public hearing for the text amendment 25-12 ran in the Record Observer and the Bay Times on October 24th, October 31st, and November 7th, and a copy of the advertisement is included in the file.
Fantastic. We'll start with staff. Ms. Jones, you have the floor.
Yes, good morning. So, the amendment before you is a citizen-sponsored text amendment. I just want to put this out there that you're not generally used to seeing them this time of year, citizen-sponsored, but when it is a critical area text amendment, they can submit them in August as well as February. So, just so that you are aware of that nuance, because you may have been wondering why we have a citizen-sponsored now. So, the amendment before you is to allow for growth allocation within the RCA for the award for uses that are existing as of June 29, 1988, and those uses must be nonprofit institutional uses, specifically must be secondary education and youth camps. Within the critical area, growth allocation is specifically so that someone can go through the process of changing their designation. We don't see that application very often, but that is at least the process in which they can do so. And then there are standards in which they have to address whether they are adjacency or non adjacency standards. Adjacency standards are when that property that's in question for growth allocation is either LDA or adjacent to an LDA or an IDA. When it comes to the application before you, this is a non adjacency standard. Therefore, they do not have to be adjacent to what would be an LDA or an IDA. So, generally, this is you're looking at the RCA in question here. The annotated code does give the county the authority to put forward amendments that are non adjacency, but they must be specific. They must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The amendment before you is consistent with the comp plan. Obviously, the comp plan does support education as well. It doesn't address youth camps and that specific use, but it does address ecotourism, and that's just looking at, you know, the nature-based existing ways that the county has, and youth camps are generally nature-based, outside-oriented, waterfront. So, it does address that portion, but not specifically in the nature of a youth camp. When you're talking about the RCA and how it is protected essentially through requirements already, this amendment does put limitations on the expansion of that use as a youth camp or a secondary education, specifically that it's only for those two uses. The use has to be prior to June 29, 1988, and it does allow for expansion of that existing use, but it has to be for the same property owner and for the same use. So, they can't be proposing a different use in the expansion portion of it. So, those do kind of assist with still fostering the intent of the RCA. Also, it is limited to 150 acres of our remaining 458 acres of growth allocation. So, by basically saying we only limit that throughout the entire county to 150 acres, we can't use any more of our remaining growth allocation than that, than what is allowed. We do have an existing non adjacency standard within the county code. It is specifically for public need for emergency and medical services. So, we do have one that is existing. This amendment did go forward to the Critical Area Commission for informational-only meeting in October. They did address comments. The applicant has provided answers essentially to those concerns, and staff has as well. Based on this, county has proposed, or does propose, you know, that we send a favorable recommendation to the county commissioners, specifically based on, you know, that we can propose an alternative growth allocation standard. There is remaining acres of growth allocation and the fact that it is supported in the comp plan, and the applicant has addressed the concerns of the Critical Area Commission. If you have questions, I'm more than happy to address them, but the applicant is here to address them as well.
Any questions for Stephanie from staff? Kathy?
One question. If ownership changes or this ceases to function as an educational institution, does all this remain in effect?
So, basically, if the use can, like after, are you saying, are you asking if there was a build-out through the growth allocation, what would happen if the landowner was to change?
Change usage, basically what I'm saying.
They can't.
They can't?
They can't. Yeah, they could change landowners, but they would not be able to change the use.
They'd still be bound by the regulations.
Be sold to another camp.
Right. So, your growth, when you award growth allocation, it is specific to the use that is proposed at that time.
Okay.
So, it would have to be consistent with what was proposed with the growth allocation.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Are you legal counsel? Mr. Showalter.
I'm a comment today.
Wearing another hat.
Well, not really.
We're on the same side.
There you go.
So, I think Stephanie did a great job summarizing this application. Gunston, as you know, has.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm sorry. For the record, Ryan Showalter, 100 Northwest Street East in Maryland, appearing on behalf of the Gunston School. The school, as you know, has been an active participant in the educational space in the county for a very long time, sits on a beautiful campus on the Corsica River, and recently purchased additional land and has a desire, both a long and short-term plan, to expand the educational facilities of the campus. The campus has grown and evolved organically over time, and right now is a compilation of a number of different parcels of varying size, some of which have no impervious surface on them, some of which exceed the lot coverage limitations. But the campus as a whole requires growth allocation for additional educational buildings, parking lots. And so, we've had discussions with the county staff now for several years about this process, and I know that the county's critical area comprehensive rewrite contemplated sort of a placeholder to address this issue, but that process is moving more slowly than Gunston is able to wait. So, we initiated this text amendment, and the bulk of what is before you is actually language that the county staff and Critical Area Commission staff had worked through as part of the overall rewrite of the critical area regulation. So, we were provided that by the county staff, had a couple of refinements, and then submitted the application. As noted, the growth allocation, if awarded, would be specific to the use. So, this is not the camel's nose to, you know, convert to a hotel or something else. This would be for youth camps or for educational facilities. I've talked to the directors of Camp Pocomuth and Camp Wright. Neither of them have immediate expansion plans, but both support the application and desire to see that flexibility in the county code. And the Critical Area Commission met and discussed this two weeks ago. They had just a few minor concerns or questions, and those principally related to, you know, what happens if the use is sold, and seeking one or two minor clarifications. So, we've addressed those, I think, to the county staff's satisfaction, and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Mr. Showalter from staff? Kathy, any questions?
No, no questions.
All right. John, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody online?
Do you want me?
Your choice.
All right, thank you. A little easier to see you all.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Stevens, Centerville, Maryland. I represent the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camps. And as you know, the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camps acquired through, mostly through donation, the Aspen Institute properties along with the University of Maryland. And several, a couple of years ago, we took them through a conditional use process after they acquired the property to turn the Houghton House and the River House, that were formerly institutional conference centers, into the camp. And they received that approval from the Board of Appeals, so they'll be operating, I think, this summer, will be their first summer operating in those facilities. They had anticipated and always have anticipated expanding the facilities, particularly the Houghton House facilities, and portion of which is in the critical area, and as you know, is RCA way down there towards Y Island. And we met with Critical Area Commission and county staff probably three years ago and had discussions about how all that would come into play and some of the nuances associated with that. Would we need growth allocation, wouldn't we? I think the determination was, in all likelihood, we're going to need growth allocation down there. We have no issue with the substance of this amendment. I have spoken with both Amy and Ryan, as well as Lindsey, and provided them with an important and significant clarification, though, that needs to be made. And I think that when you look at the staff report on page two, the staff considered that this amendment would be covered, would also cover the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camps. They're referenced specifically down at the bottom of page two. And what the clarification we'd like included, and the reason is, is that this would apply to, as it's written, to any institutional use that was a youth camp or a school as of 1988, June 30th, I think it is, June 29, 1988, the date the Critical Area Program was adopted locally. Aspen Institute was an institutional use down there on that date on both properties. Approvals, there are all those zoning approvals and so on, and they were operating at that date, but they didn't convert and transfer to the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camps until around 2021 or so, is when Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camps acquired it. They then got all the proper approvals to change to a youth camp, another institutional use that was considered permitted. So, the nuance in this and the language that I've provided both staff and Ryan and Lindsey is that we would like it to be clarified that if it was an institutional use in '88 and was a lawfully existing youth camp or educational facility, same language, as of the date of enactment of this ordinance, that that also could, the adjacency rules would also be loosened for growth allocation. It's really that simple. And without that, it's almost contradictory to what I think everybody's been operating under, and that is that the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camp is an institutional use. Growth allocation would be applied for sometime in the relatively near future for an expansion of that facility. If you don't know what Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camps is, is they provide a camp experience with full medical staff for seriously, and in some cases terminally ill children. And so, it's with the Paul Newman Charity. They started up in Connecticut. They just acquired their mid-Atlantic facility, which is this, you know, for hospitals like Hopkins, University of Maryland, so on. So, it's received a really great welcome from the county, and we're excited to help them down here. So, we hope that you'll include this language in. I don't think it, you can ask staff, I don't think it's contradictory to anything you're trying to do otherwise.
We have no objection. Staff, have any comment on Mr. Stevens?
No, it does address, you know, Hole-in-the-Wall Gang and the intent with them already being included, so it does meet the intent and no concerns.
Chairman, Mr. Stevens provided copies. Would it be helpful if I pass them out that has the additional amendments in red line?
It was part of my packet. I don't know if it was part of others.
I think the additional edits that you received were staff edits in response to critical area comments. So, these are two new additional edits to.
I have one sort of observation, and that is I have no problem with what you're suggesting at all, but it can only go one way, as far as I'm concerned. In other words, if we make this decision and Hole-in-the-Wall Gang becomes, I don't know what the proper word is, a charitable use under this. Once again, I'm thinking about subsequent owners, that they don't get to revert to institutional use and it goes back to what it was before. Is that correct in thinking that?
I think that that is correct, that whatever is approved and conditions of approval on this site will remain on the site.
Ain't on the site.
Unless they come back to you and ask for something different, under whatever the laws that exist at that time are.
Okay.
I also think it's important to note that this would only allow those that qualify to apply for growth allocation, so you're not by right expanding the use. They would still have to come through the growth allocation process.
We all know it's a relatively simple process. And quick and cheap. Quick and easy. Kathy, any questions?
No, no questions for me. Thank you.
And any public comment? I'll step down. Thank you. Thank you. Hearing no public comment, I will now close the public hearing on this application and reopen the Planning Commission's regular meeting session to hold discussion and conduct votes. Any further discussion from Commissioners on this topic? Questions for staff and applicant?
Yes.
Seeing none, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I guess the question is, what form should the motion take? In other words, I move in favor of the change. What do I need to read into the record?
So, I think first you all need to decide whether you, if there's a majority in favor of the recommended text amendment with the recommendation as proposed by Mr. Stevens. And then the motion would be to approve the ordinance with the changes from Mr. Stevens' finding that the text amendment is consistent with the Queen Anne's County Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Chapter, the Critical Area Act, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Comprehensive Plan.
I'm never going to remember all that.
I think.
Can I ask one question? Mr. Showalter.
Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
I think you've already addressed it, but I just missed it. But you do approve of the text amendment changes that Mr. Stevens has.
Yes, I have no objection.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear you say.
Absolutely.
That was it.
Gentlemen? Are you finished?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
Don't ask me twice.
Resolve that the, hope I get this right, resolve that the Planning Commission makes a favorable recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners regarding citizen-sponsored text amendment number 25-12 to amend the existing growth allocation standards within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area to allow for the award of growth allocation within the RCA non-adjacent to existing LDA or IDA for the expansion of nonprofit institutional uses that provide secondary education or youth camps that have existed as of June 29, 1988. The Planning Commission provides the following findings. And what do I need here?
So, first, I would, back to your motion that you recommend the ordinance with the amendments, and then you can make the findings consistent with the ordinance and those amendments, finding that it is consistent with the Queen Anne's County Comprehensive Plan, the Critical Area Act, the Land Use Article, and Queen Anne's County Critical Area Program.
Recommend that the county adopt the motion as written and further find that the motion as written is consistent with the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Act, Annotated Code of Maryland, Natural Resources and Land Uses Article, and the Comprehensive Plan.
Would you like to include Mr. Stevens' provision?
And includes a recommendation that this motion further addresses an issue regarding the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang in the former Aspen Institute property on Y Island in Queen Anne County.
Satisfy your?
Yes, and that language would be as proposed by Mr. Stevens in the draft amendment received.
Proposed by Mr. Stevens in the draft amendment, brought forth in today's meeting.
Thank you.
Council, are you good with that?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Kathy, any questions, comments, concerns?
Go, go second.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're in favor, Kathy? Just confirm, yeah, there's a delay here. I'll speak slower, and maybe you speak faster. We'll meet in the middle. We have a motion. We have a second. We have all in favor, unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Which one were yours? Was that yours?
Are there any other questions from staff? Are we satisfied with all the commentary that was made earlier? Any further comments? I know you were sort of trying to cut your, abbreviate your opening statements. You're in the interest of time. I didn't know if anything came up.
No, just, I know that there was a conversation, and I don't want to belabor the point, but there's been some criticism of county process and expense, and I do just want to clarify that the comments that were made were not specific to county staff and to county process, but to expenses related to meeting state provisions. And I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Yes, I think Mr. Waterman said that as well, but.
I think he said that.
Look, you say it again, just to make sure everybody heard it.
I wanted to say it one more time.
All right, thank you so much, Amy. Appreciate you. Stephanie, all good?
Yep.
Fantastic. No more public.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. See you next month.